This isn't a good start to our meeting. We're missing our attorney and we're missing our present. But I think in order to be efficient, we should if. Our other presenter goes in line, we'll give first two right in number three.
Where do you want me?
They're having trouble with recordings of the meetings and sometimes if you're just standing there talking it doesn't pick it up.
Got it, okay.
Heather, the last few years will have to gather.
Okay, good afternoon. Heather Wright for the applicant. It's the property is fifty-five, fifty-nine Old Riverhead Road, which is a two-point-eight acre parcel on the west side of Old Riverhead Road, to the north is Timber Ridge and to the south is fifty-one Old Riverhead Road. So we're here today for a special exception application. We believe that the proposed development meets the criteria of one ninety-seven, eighty point three. So as the board's probably aware, we've been before the planning board for quite some time for site plan approval. We spent a lot of time with the board discussing the size, the orientation, the location of the garages. We have a detailed landscaping plan and screening that we believe is compatible with the area and the community. We'll have a pickleball court, a fire pit, and our off-site sewage treatment plant to serve the community. So if the board would like, I can take you through each of the buildings and their sizes and then answer any questions that you have related to the special exception criteria.
That'd be terrific. Thank you.
Sure. So we have twelve buildings in total, ten a single family and two multifamily dwellings. So the two multifamily dwellings will have three units each. And I'm not sure if it would be helpful to the board. If you have it already, you can tell me, but I have the site plan copies, so if you want to see the location.
I have seen them before, but please say.
Sometimes I thought.
Yes, saw the buildings.
The building's better, not the site.
Okay, so we have twelve total buildings, but sixteen total units. So there's three different models for the single-family dwellings. That's model A, B, and C. If you look at the site plan, models A, B, and C will be both to the north and south. So there'll be a mixture of models A, B, and C sort of along the road as you enter, as you enter the site. Models D and E will be all the way to the west. And so those are the multifamily with three, three units each. So model A, we have, each of the models A, B, and C will have a unfinished basement, a first floor, second floor, and a proposed garage. The materials, I don't know if you need me to go through the materials, but it'll have white trim with whiteboard and patent siding, blacks, black roof, black asphalt roof, brown windows and doors, and mahogany columns. Each of those models will have two, two bedrooms. So model A is total with the first floor, second floor, and garage, two thousand two hundred ninety-six square feet. Model B is two thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet, and model C is two thousand four hundred seventy-five square feet, all the same materials. Now, when we talk about models D and E, those are the multifamily units. So the first, in model D, the first floor will have, the left side is nine hundred and fifty-one square feet. Will have two, will also have two bedrooms. And then the first floor on the right, which is eight hundred and ninety-one square feet, will also have two bedrooms. And then the second floor is a larger unit of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four square feet. And model E is very similar to that. The two on the first floor will approximately nine hundred and fifty-one square feet. And then the second floor is a larger unit. The ADA compliant unit will be in model D. And the materials will be the same in these multifamily units as in the single-family units. So we are, we're proposing that the, that the model E units be the affordable units. So we'll have the one large one on the second floor and the two smaller ones below that. So as you saw in the planning board's memo, the planning board was comfortable with the density and the site plan configuration. You know, we comply with all the dimensional requirements in the code, lot coverage setbacks. And the board found that they're, you know, the market rate and affordable units, you know, it was the right sort of mix for the community.
Heather, these aprons, those are parking for the units, like the?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep.
So that probably satisfies the parking for the units themselves. And then you have the, the street parking for extra.
Yeah, we meet the parking requirements of the code.
Yeah, it seems like there's plenty of parking.
Correct.
I see you have the, are you, did you get the cross-access with?
We did get the cross, we're gonna do a crash gate. The planning board preferred that, and so we're gonna have the cross-access there.
Model E is the affordable?
Correct.
And there's, that's the only one?
Yeah, because model E will have the three units in it, and per the code, we're required to have three affordable units.
Okay, and model D says three units, but that's not?
Those are not designated as affordable units.
Okay.
For the affordable? And for the, for the market rate, probably somewhere in the million five range, I would think. But the affordable, I'd have to do the calculation per the code.
Before I ask that question.
Right, right.
I know the planning board vetted this pretty thoroughly, right?
Well, yeah, because we started this before COVID, and then it's, everything kind of slowed down. And then there was some reconfigurations of the site plan, and then we picked it back up. And so, yes, it's been vetted for quite some time.
Yeah.
It's been in the process since two thousand seventeen.
I think so, yeah.
Been a while.
So we've been before the ARB. We're just about ready to get the final health department. So we're, we're in good shape here.
Any other questions from the board?
No, it just, I just wanted to make sure that there's enough, enough room in there. I know the parking spaces are pretty narrow. They're only eight footers.
Right, correct. I think it works, though, in terms of the.
Where the garages are together, you have the wider.
You have the wide.
Highway areas accessing both garages. That adds additional parking, too. Did you know, did the fire district come back to you yet?
I don't, I don't know. The answer, I don't, I don't recall if they did or not.
Cause I don't see any hydrant in there at all.
I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah, I should, probably should have one, check and make sure that they didn't, they reviewed it. In their recommendations, cause they'll, but it could be in some of the other plans.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much.
Great.
Appreciate it.
So I would ask if the board could put this on for a public hearing, if that's possible?
I don't see any difficulty with that.
Okay.
It's our public hearing. May second meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I saw our presentor walk in the door, so he's ready now. If you could go to the podium once again because of the microphone situation, that's.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Aram Turchunian. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of Greater West Hampton, and accompanied by Mr. James Hume with the Rotary Club of West Hampton. And we come to you with a public service project that both our clubs are working on. And that is to announce our service organizations and the welcome sign that already exists on West Hampton Riverhead Road. So I've provided for you a mock-up here, and I have copies. We chose this location because it's, it's already an event sign, which focuses people's attention on the upcoming events. And we thought that instead of introducing additional signage on the road, we would consolidate it in one point. I think that's usually a safety-conscious way to proceed. And we're very excited to work with the village, you know. Both our organizations have been doing service projects for, I think, a hundred years for Rotary and about fifty years for Kiwanis. So together about a hundred and fifty years. And we'd, you know, like to get your feedback, and if you agree, we'd like to get your approval to move forward.
Information from you before, and I spoke to the trustees individually and got some feedback. And I think I responded to you at one point, modifying the size, which you have done, to accommodate future service organizations in the distant future. We don't know when. But that was done, and it's very attractive to me. I don't, any board members have any questions or comments? I think it did a good job. I think it enhances the welcome sign.
Dean Johnson, I think it's appropriate that you're taking the initiative and that your, its organizations are recognized, the staples in the community. You know, in the future, there's always gonna be new organizations, and that's great. But, you know, who's doing this work is your, the three organizations, so.
Yes, and thank you for mentioning the third, which I neglected, the Knights of Columbus, who, by the way, all three of us coordinate for the food pantry every year. So it's really a team effort.
Very important work.
I do appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board? Or if anybody else, you potentially could put another sign below that one?
Yeah, we, we left enough room for another row. More volunteers.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll make a pitch right now. If you'd like to be a Kiwanis member, we, on the first and third Tuesdays, at Joe's American Grill.
Yeah, it's, you're, every organization's in the same problem that everybody else is in. The number of people are dwindling down, so hopefully this will bring attention to it.
Thank you.
It's great.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure.
Topic two?
I'll look the sign over.
This is a letter I emailed you already, just before.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, my name is Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York. So I wanted to give the board an update on the Fire Island to Montauk Point Plan, affectionately known as FIMP. And the good news is, FIMP is moving forward. The project in Montauk was completed just within the last forty-five days, and that's looking really well, performing extremely well, even after these last few storms. But focusing on West Hampton Beach, I've handed out a package to you. It's got like twenty, thirty pages in it, but let me. Let me focus on the page that's displayed, otherwise. That's the one that is us. And I'll email you this entire thing, but the, this area that's highlighted. So I want to focus your attention on the highlighted area. This is about a twenty-two-hundred-foot section of beach in, in the village. It extends from, Rob, you're looking right at it there. We're, that's from, it's basically centered around Jettie Four, is what it looks like. So the good news is, the project, these are the sixty percent complete project plans. Project is currently scheduled to go to bid this summer and to be built in the fall of twenty-four, so this year. When I got these original plans, I reviewed them. This also includes additional areas in the West Hampton area of the town of Southampton and the West Hampton Dunes Village area. So that is the entire project area, actually goes from Jettie Four to Cupsog Beach. So this is the subset within West Hampton Beach that is, that affects us. The, the one thing that I noticed was that they did their surveys in November of twenty-three. And as we know, they had a whole series of storms, and pretty bad ones in December and January, and the beach has changed significantly. So I've drafted a letter for your consideration to require, not require, to request the Army Corps to come back out and resurvey because we think a lot more of the beach qualifies now than did in November. So that's pretty much where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Actually, you came in and explained this to me, so it looks, it looks very logical that we would request this. Makes sense.
Also, from an engineering point of view, the longer the beach fill, the better it performs. So this is very short. Usually beach fills on the ocean are about five thousand feet, about a mile. This is about half a mile. So the, the beach fills performances, if you, if you, if you double the width, you quadruple the resilient time that it remains. So from an engineering point of view, we really think that they should expand this as well, so engineering and conditions.
Is this gonna be going all the way to Cupsog?
It's all part of the same project, so they'll, they'll build whatever pieces of it don't, you know, that qualify to be built.
Oh, okay. They're not gonna do the whole area all the way?
No, they don't usually. They usually do like two or three spots. In this case, there's only two spots. We want to expand. I'd like to see them expand this all the way to the village line.
Yep. Village line to the east?
To, to the west.
Is that where it's at?
Yeah, in the, in the left center of the photo is the parking lot for Jettie Four. So really, it needs to go another mile.
Questions from the board?
No, this hopefully they. My only question, do you think if we request them to resurvey, it'll hold the other end up?
No, 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 this is all going together. They've got their money, they've, they gotta come out. What we've recommended to them is, they don't need to do a full bathometric survey. If you look at those plans, they go thousands of feet offshore. They can do a land survey, which will show how much the dune is retreated, and those are much faster.
Yeah, okay. Cause they don't want you to think it held up, because they're, they're doing a survey.
Stranger things have happened.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks, Aram.
The next thing is the property appraisal, ninety-five Dune Road, and I guess I'll speak in the absence of our attorney. We have gotten two estimates for that appraisal to be done, and our attorneys are recommending that we do both. And the price is very affordable for both surveys, and will amount to three thousand fifty dollars. And I think it's better to have two guns other than just one, to give you more information and, or solid ground.
Yep.
For assessing places and things. Any difficulty with that? Next item is valet parking proposal. Brian, I see here. Thank you for going to the podium for your presentation, so we get it on the microphone. That's good.
I don't have a PowerPoint like I did last year. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mayor Urban, my name is Brian Monahan, founder and CEO of Check Valet Parking Solutions in Patchogue. Right now, on average, we service any close to a hundred locals and visitors of Patchogue with the castle of parking. Like, West Hampton Beach, parking is a nightmare on weekends, and I've came up with a idea that works. I sublet doctor, lawyer, school, church, anyone who's off at five and off on weekends. I provide these local businesses with a passive revenue stream with monthly income for leasing their parking lots when they're not using them. And then I provide additional parking and/or valet parking services for the entire village. For events like Alive After Five or the St. Patty's Day Parade, we're into the hundreds. I eliminate valet parking, and now it's just slightly off-site parking lots that the patrons can walk from. This Saturday, the Blue Point Brewery has a music festival featuring Shaggy, and I am gonna be running six parking lots. We're estimating to park anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand cars, so a thousand people can enjoy the Village of Patchogue. Last year, I tried to break into West Hampton Beach, and I had only been opened for my first year for four weeks when this board invited me down. And as I came in to learn a lot about village codes, ordinances, and everything, it gets a little convoluted and complicated. I would love to come and help operations here and let more people enjoy this unbelievably beautiful and quaint village of West Hampton Beach. It's just that I had invested a significant amount of money last year trying to get things up and running, and I don't want to do that again without return. Just to be flat out honest. I have a good relationship with Seafield. They're on the east side of the strip. Father Christopher spoke to me, possibly using St. Mark's, so we could possibly have on the edge of the strip two different lots. And then, as of right now, I have a mobile app in development. Let's save that for maybe three months from now. But in the meantime, my website operates very efficiently. Patrons can go on, make a reservation, select a location to meet their valet, and that's it. So whether it be at St. Mark's or the Seafield, I'm trying to get in touch with Burner Law Group. I recently heard that Mr. Burner had passed, if that's correct. They have, right next to the theater, a little private lot that screams Val Amy. But I need their permission, but also in the honor of Mr. Burner, I thought we could pass, I heard there was a non-for-profit going on, and maybe we can make it something about him, just so we can hopefully work together in remembering his name and also being able to get operations moving forward. I have developed a pretty good relationship with Mrs. Rachel Hurst from Rooted Hospitality. She is in Patchogue and out here as well. So I know I have a couple restaurants already on board. It's just now execution. My biggest obstacle is not being able to operate how I operate in Patchogue, and let me explain a little bit more. Behind Shops, the number one steakhouse and restaurant in Patchogue, in the municipal lot, I'm allowed to put up my pop-up tent or cones, and I have enough room for three lanes of traffic, a valet lane, one way and another, so there is no traffic congestion. I work with public safety, and we have a great relationship. So that we can now schedule reservations to show up right behind Shops, which then also services that meatball place, Daisy's, the pinball place, Stereogarden, and several others. And my biggest obstacle last year was not being able to operate in any municipal lots and/or anywhere on the main street. And then I was with my pop-up tent in the Seafield lot, all alone. And no, with no way to advertise, well, no way for anyone to be seen. I know the village doesn't allow sandwich boards or flags or signs. So with some help or creative thinking, I would love to come bring Check Valet to West Hampton Beach with your guys' help.
Admittedly, you did, you did a valiant effort to try and get started last year. You had a late start. And I think we appreciated the fact that you went through the channels and got, went to the planning board and got permission to work at Seafield for their parking area. We would appreciate you doing the same if you have these other venues that you mentioned.
Absolutely.
To get the, the seasonal approval for that kind of situation. As far as the village parking lots and the village areas, again, stopping and starting on Main Street would be counterproductive.
Agreed. I was hoping to make use of the lots that you said would be, are right behind the firehouse. There's that big lot where, if used right, it could just really be pickup, drop-off, and then, yeah, it's a short walk. But, you know, it's better than circling for.
All the, the thing that came up, or village attorney brought up, is that the use of village property in that manner would require a bid proposal. So we would have to have bid specifications, then we advertise it, put it out to bid, and then we get a bidder. And if we can coordinate with you to develop your needs, and then we can kind of develop with our attorney a bid proposal, we can put it out to bid, and then you could bid on it. And if other people bid on it, then we can't prevent that. But then we could have a specific plan for a specific place in the village. And like you said, that one parking area, one parking lot, to be, I guess, on the weekend. That would be up to you.
If I'm not using the actual parking spaces, if I'm just using as a pickup and drop-off, will that still require a bid? I'm just trying to configure, like, I know Patchogue and here are very different. I'm just trying to see if that's.
I think our attorney equated it to a concession. So, and we have a concession right now at Rogers Beach for food service. So we do put that out to bid, so this would be a parking concession as well. So I, that would, that's an attorney's question.
Okay.
What are the roadways and where are the parking lots and how that interplays?
Cause Patchogue was very similar. They wouldn't allow me to use the actual spaces, but because I'm just using the lanes and removing the cars to an off-site parking lot, that's where they granted me permission. But I can't use the actual municipal lots to hold any inventory of cars for profit.
So I'm certain you explored this, but, and it sounds like you did last year with Seafield, that for that exchange, that space that you're looking for, what's, what's the criteria for it? It's gotta be visible or, you know?
It just had to be private property where I was parking it, not a village property.
Well, not where the parking is happening, but what, like, what you're looking to do in that lot behind the fire department, where it gets complicated with, with the bid process. If that exchange, if that occurred on private property, obviously, it would be.
I'm behind Shops in the municipal lot, so I don't know if, I don't know how anything works. I'm just trying to compare apples to apples, and nothing is apple to apples.
Well, yeah, and I'm just, I'm like, so I'm thinking, you know, you have Seafield and you have the St. Mark's Church. If St. Mark's Church parking lot became.
That hub, that would.
That hub that you're looking for in the lot behind there, then that eliminates us having to get, you know, all involved.
Right. I think St. Mark's would be better, cause then I, would I be put signage anywhere on their property? Just cause Seafield has the hedges and on the east side of the strip, so when people come in, they pass through the whole strip and. Just because Seafield has the hedges and on the east side of the strip, so when people come in, they pass through the whole strip and I'm forgotten about. So it was just, you know, logistically not the right area. But if also I can work with Burner Law Group in the center of town, that could also, you know, we have a few different options. And that's why I'm glad to get here as early as I am. Patchogue is starting to get extremely busy, and I want to have all my systems locked, so I can dedicate the appropriate, appropriate time to give this my best effort. And I plan on, for the Fourth of July, a week or two before, to get things started, if we can figure everything out.
We don't, they're not.
I think, I think that would be like that, that'd probably be a direction.
Well, I mean, it brings up another topic, which we have to discuss, because I brought this up a few years ago about A-frame sandwich board signs. And it didn't really get any momentum. The board had mixed feelings on it, but I was always looking to support businesses by allowing them with certain parameters, certain size limitations, materials.
I'm talking to the chamber members to get a bunch of business owners on board to support.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I put that forward a few years ago, but didn't seem like the business community really knew much about it. I kind of put it out to them. I said, if you want this, and then it looks like you're doing that with a favor.
I'm gonna follow up thoroughly with that, yes.
I mean, I, I, for one, would be supportive of developing those parameters of what would be allowed so that it could help businesses like yours and, and, you know.
Because there's a great way of doing it and the wrong way of doing it, between cheap material and chalk and whatever. It's got to, it's got to keep this place classy.
Yeah, it's, it's got to meet specifications, and we can define those specifications, and I think it would help people a lot.
We have just the signs that valet, without opening it up to everybody having anything to sign, say, this is specific area, valet tonight, here, valet parking, that's it, leave it. Not opening up there.
We did have a vendor.
Yeah. We did allow the lineage at, at St. Mark's for the winter.
Window market, that might be something.
In the market, and we do allow, I mean, we do have the village green, we have the farmer's market, and each vendor has their own sign. So maybe we could tie that kind, that's a legal question, as how we can try and tie, we would like to accommodate you.
That could be something that we look into legally, where, you know, with the market, we have the big sign, that's the Chambers sign, right? Chambers, the head of that, Nate, we have the sign for them. Maybe we can look into an enhanced parking sign that isn't specific to his business, that whether, you know, whether it's him or, or someone else, if they, if there's a bidding process, but that we can have, you know, a valet parking sign.
I wanted a category with them putting the sign on Montauk Highway over there, Riverhead Road.
Right.
Under there, put over there valet parking at these locations. I mean, something simple.
Yeah, direct, like what we've been talking about, directional signage.
But you're coming into the village, you say, here, this sign, you can be valet parking over here, you don't have no physical there, but I'm just saying. They're putting up their sign over there, I think, so that would coordinate something like that.
As soon as we start mixing service organization, because part of this proposal, we wanted to come up with a definition of a service organization rather than a commercial enterprise, and that's where we get into the legal aspects and the need for a bid and all those kinds of things. I think it's, we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to sort it through.
Maybe we gotta get some new attorneys here.
There we go.
Can we staff out meeting with the attorneys and such?
I will speak to our attorney and see what we can come up with and, and get some more guidance.
Wonderful.
We're not against the idea. We like the idea. We just want to try and make it work.
Same.
You know.
I'm here to serve. Like, it's working in Patchogue. I know it can work out here.
It's just a matter of how we can get it to work.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we have to, obviously, like Mayor said, you know, it's a private business, you know. We have to be careful about favoring a private business without the opportunity for other private businesses to do it. But we do want to pave the way to, to make it work. And I think we can do that.
Does anyone know Nancy Burner personally? Wonderful.
Yes, very well. We can talk offline. I can put you in touch with Nancy.
Wonderful.
Just a question though, so you said, right now you have three lanes of traffic in the municipal lot in Patchogue, right? Obviously, that's not going to be our lane street, but like they were saying, we have like a drop-off location that has a large parking lot. I don't know that Nancy would be willing to give up, but it would be maybe a sub.
We'll use that for appointment and reservation only, so that I can control the amount, of course. It just won't be like a appointment only.
Also, then you see field as well.
So the, I would, I was going to use the Burner Lane to just pick up, drop off, and then shuttle the cars to St. Mark's or Seafield. That's where they will stay until the client is ready, and then we'll come and select maybe several pickup-drop-off locations that won't block traffic and, and cause any congestion. Thank you. Wonderful. And then also was mentioned last time, and I think we're okay, because I also use electric scooters with helmets to navigate around town. DOT-approved vests, helmets, and Unagi electric scooters. They qualify as electric bicycles. They have to, can't be on village sidewalks, must be operating in the bike or shoulder and obey all standard road rules of traffic.
Yeah, it's all good.
And the last service I provide, I'm trying to provide more of, we average about maybe one a week, is what we call a safe home valet. How often enough do, you know, people on dates or gatherings have one too many? Then they're in a, you know, weird position, whether they are able to drink or drive. So we'll drive, because we have their keys, we can be like, sir, do, you know, have you had too many? Would you like us to drive you home? And if they're in an eight-mile radius, we'll drive them in their car home and then take an Uber or Lyft back. I'm also in the process of creating a non-for-profit 501(c)(3), because I believe that service should be getting out for free in most parts. And then, if I can do it big enough, you know, I think Budweiser, Corona, Jack Daniels, they should pay for it.
I'll be, I'll get in touch with our attorneys, and I'll get back to you, and we'll work this out as best we can. Hopefully, we got a, a better head start on the season this time, so it should work out.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We want to, we want to help.
Next item, Mr. Weinberger, one of four main of music, taking for music. And once again, if you go to the podium for this recording situation.
I was here a few months ago, and we spoke about it a little bit. It's going to use the lawn that's there. The only reason why we didn't forward at that time was because we were considering a patio or building something. But not interested in doing any of that, just the lawn and the sidewalk that's there, that's our property, my property. And I don't know if there's any, should I expand on what we, about last time, because it's really just a music.
Maybe to refresh our memory.
So I often pull up to my building at one or four Main Street and see musicians playing in front of the building without permits. So I said, you know, that would be nice, maybe have it with some consistency and allow some local or schoolteachers or high schools or to maybe curate some quality music or curate it myself, because I, I'm a lover of live music. I support in different places around Nassau and Suffolk. And I thought maybe it'd be better to do it properly and get a permit and schedule it for afternoons. So I'm really interested in early afternoons, evenings, not in the nighttime, when it seems to be music around town already. And I thought it would be a wonderful thing to just have some really nice music on Main Street during the weekends. The daytime.
But I thought on your hours of operations would be one P.M. to ten P.M.
Yeah, but.
That's, that's extended out. To me, that's, and Thursday through Sunday, were you planning to have it continuous?
No, so it's just the, that's just a window of time, depending on if an artist could do this time or that time, but mostly.
Okay, so it's more sporadic rather than, you're, you're not going to book in nine hundred hours.
It might be two hours, it might be three hours. That would be like, somebody arrived at two to five kind of thing. That's what I would try to lean to and be done before the evening, because there's other things going on and things like that. And, and not a, not a profit thing. I just love for live music and to bring that kind of beautiful thing to the street, to Main Street. So, no, mostly probably Saturdays and Sundays. I just put that window in case there was a holiday weekend that I would be already legal to do.
Be a booking nightmare trying to. Nine hours of music for days a week.
You have to have cough drops and, like, a doctor on the side. So that's it.
You're going to set it, have it set up right behind the bench?
Yeah, so the property comes out a little bit forward, so we'll figure it out over the first, but in that area, I probably would prefer to keep them on the side, you know, behind the bench area. But, you know, I think, pretty much, yeah. There's a little sketch there. It comes out a little bit, so property extends past it.
Mostly acoustic?
Yeah.
Usually.
Yeah, you know, it wouldn't be loud or silly, or silly. Yeah, but I would, I would amplify it a little bit, but, you know, it'd be really nice music. It wouldn't be like, you know, heavy, heavy, you know, loud music or anything like that. It'd just be elegant stuff. Some, you know, sometimes one player, sometimes it could be a little trio or something like that. I have some, several in mind that are just beautiful, you know, there'd be some, some pop stuff for the younger kids, and there'll be some Sinatra stuff and some James Taylor and stuff, just.
Mix it up.
Yeah, different weekends, different player, and just, I don't love the music. I'm not going to be selling anything. I'm not going to be drinking. I can do anything like that. People walk by and say, wow, what a nice touch.
I like it.
You like any other?
That was appreciated.
It'll be fun.
My only question was to, like, the time that originally is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Two to three hours, I would say, any, any person, that's all they can really do, and never more than one, you know. If they, if we, if it was such a great thing and people are loving it, maybe we'd have somebody play from one to three, and then somebody would come from two to four or something like that, or three to five or something like that, but that's it. And it's very rarely, if ever, an evening, unless I spoke to some of the other merchants around, like Elise or somebody else, and they weren't doing anything, and would be nice to have it, then I'd have the ability, because I'd be permitted already.
I think that sounds good, and I think usually this board has the opinion, let's try it, see how it goes.
Yeah, that's, that's my responsibility to make it work, you know, so I realize that. And if I don't do a good job, I wouldn't be able to do it again, so I'll, I'll make sure I do a good job.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is special event fees, and this came up in a head meeting, the need for this again. And I think it's time to revisit it again. We visited it probably a year and a half ago, and I came up with this proposal back then, and I know Mr. Panal can, had some ideas back then. I just would like the board to start revisiting this, thinking about this, and try and institute something before we get into the heat of the season. I included percentages, once we establish a cost analysis for a particular event. I included percentages that different occasions would be responsible to pay. Going from a for-profit event with the use of village property, and they charge for admission, they pay one hundred percent of our costs. That is police, DPW, whatever it may be. All the way down to a community event with use of village property. It's not a fundraiser, but it's a community-sponsored event. And something like the St. Patrick's Day Parade, they pay nothing. So, and then there are intermediary percentages proposed as well, which are subject to the board's thoughts and input. But this is, this is just a start for the main communication, to try and come up with an approach to charging for these things. Because we can get the expense of five K runs, for example, and police, and it's, it's, costs are going up high. And for the community to bear that cost without passing it along to some degree, I think, is, is, those days are gone.
Yeah.
Basically.
I agree.
I think this is a good approach.
All right. Well, we can, we can think about it and talk about it. That's why this is.
Something's got to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we started it years ago with doing the approved route for the five Ks that minimized our cost.
Right.
But, you know, this is important that we address it.
Yes, I think years ago, when we were, I think the Alzheimer's Walk was prime example, or it was just an enormous amount of manpower for a number of hours. And because the route wasn't established, and it was just, it was very expensive for us. So. Any, any thoughts right now, or we can just, we can share thoughts as we.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I read through it, it, it makes a lot of sense, the way you outlined it. In terms of who has to bear the hundred percent of the cost, it makes sense.
And then there's those for-profit events. We have one, as a matter of fact, where they don't require, they're using village property. But they don't require police, they don't require DPW.
Right, they have their own security.
It's expressory.
And it's, it's, so they're just using the property.
Yep.
If we don't, the cost analysis is zero, then their complication will be zero.
Yeah, it's almost like us coming up with a proposal to say this is what it'll cost to have this.
Right. And I think the chamber has even found that it's, it's more efficient to use private garden or garbage on their events than to use our DPWs.
Yeah, sure.
Okay? All right. Any other questions on board?
Suggestion, maybe put that guy with the valet parking, right behind the Kewanaston gas station, just there, they can, that might be good staging there, where you can have people.
Oh, he'd have to talk to the owner of that property.
That opens that place. Have them, when it comes up Montauk Highway, it's out of the village, out of the area, then they're utilized, the parking spaces, but people could come away there. Come up Montauk Highway, come up Riverhead Road, you can use that area, and then he can disperse the cars from there. So that might be something to think about, because it looks like.
Get touch with the owners.
Yeah, I'm just understanding, you're looking at the picture and saying to yourself, that might be a good area, because I can draw up taste itself. That might be something that might.
Oh, you would be.
That would tie for that.
Yeah, it's not going to alleviate congestion.
Well, I mean, it would be good if I could be like, yeah.
Very congested.
Because you have the traffic circles, you have the dune road and everything else, but this might work, because you have a traffic light, you go on Montauk Highway, you go on Riverhead Road, so.
They could pick their location.
That's something I was just. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, any of these private lots, they could pick their location.
It might be nice.
Have the person meet them.
Yeah.
Take them into town.
And then take the car to wherever they're going, pull the car, and that's it. That's just something that I was just thinking about, of, I mean, somebody could just.
Yeah, I like it being in private lots, because.
Yeah.
We make a mess. If you want, and, and for good reason, I mean, if they want to use the village lot, it's tough for us to say okay to a private company to take money. And I understand his point, it's not a parking, we're not guaranteeing parking spaces in village lots, but for them to operate out of our village lot is still.
If you're going to catch anybody coming in now.
So the more they can do it in private lots, then they don't need us.
Yeah.
A little tent there, right there, that'd be suitable, you have enough places to park, station cars if you need to, and people in and out, you got access to Montauk Highway and Riverhead Road. It might, it might just work. That's what I'm just thinking, inside the box. That's my thought.
Good ideas.
Good thought.
You're much smarter than anybody.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay, anything else from anybody else? I don't, what was my next step? Oh, um, most likely, you put in an application, you present it to the board, uh, we'll have a resolution at the next board meeting and take a vote. And it seems like it'll be a pretty favorable vote. Okay, so we'll have a resolution at the next meeting. Okay? Anyone else, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, we have an executive session, so we're going to adjourn downstairs in my office where I have more backup information for personalities, who's that are like what it's about, so.